The very first announcement that we're going to make is that for the Sheriff's Office. And I have to tell you that they've done a terrific job in this town, and we really want to commend you for that. So, we do have a letter we're going to read, and we'd like you to accept as soon as we finish reading it. So, I'll ask our clerk to read it, please.
All right.
And we're going to just hand it to him when we're done, right? Save the stamp.
Okay.
Budget charges.
All right. A letter of appreciation. Dear Sheriff McDermott, we'd like to extend to you our sincere gratitude for granting us the opportunity to utilize the community service program through the Sheriff's Office of Norfolk County. Over the past few years, we've been able to complete several important outdoor projects at the Veterans Memorial Building, Millis Public Library, Lansing-Millis Building, and Prospect Hill Cemetery with the assistance and hard work of members of the program. Most recently, the crew did a great job in cleaning up litter from roadsides across many town areas. We look forward to continuing to work with your team in the future. We are often in need of assistance with town projects, and we welcome having a crew here again soon. Thank you again for all you and your crew do to assist our community.
And we've signed that from all three of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We really do appreciate what you're doing around here.
My pleasure.
And I will tell you that the crew you've got has been great to work with.
And I just want to add, Mr. Chair, this is Tom Frain. Tom Frain is one of the gentlemen who runs the program.
Mike Tompkins.
Boots on the ground, right, Tom? Thank you. Nice to see you.
Thanks for the invitation back. It was a few months in the making.
Well, thank you for coming back and helping us out. We really appreciate it.
That was perfect. Thank you.
Much appreciated.
We also have my chief of staff, Samantha Delair, is here.
Hi, Samantha. Thank you.
And if I just say real quick.
Please.
Quick word, just, you know, is to my thanks. We need these opportunities on behalf of our justice-involved individuals who, you know, are with us for short, sometimes longer periods of time. And when they're in our pre-release program, they're anxious to get out into the community to kind of reconnect a little bit. And these are the work projects that actually help them connect with the community a little bit more. They've been through our programming at the House of Correction. A lot of times, they've gone through educational opportunities, vocational skill training. And these projects give them an opportunity to put those trainings to use. And we've done so many different projects, not just here in Millis, but as simple as a cleanup project, but sometimes more complicated with renovating housing authority units. Holbrook Town Hall, the Select Board meeting chamber was renovated several years ago by justice-involved individuals who are honing their carpentry, their painting skills. So, this is actually an opportunity for them to have what they didn't have when they came into our facility, and that's hope for a better future once they leave and come back, whether it's living in the town of Millis, or the city of Quincy, or someplace outside of Norfolk County. But these are the opportunities that our folks get, they look forward to. And you've provided them with a great opportunity to kind of connect with the community, feel that appreciation which they never had before, and give them a reason to believe there's hope post-incarceration. So, I thank the town of Millis and everything that you've done to give us those opportunities, and certainly to Tom Frain, who's been leading this effort with his crew over the course of many years. So, it's a labor of love. We enjoy doing it. Please keep feeding us with some of those projects. We're happy to accommodate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And, Mr. Chair.
Scott.
Thank you to the Sheriff's Department. I did see their crews out along 109, and it's a big help. It's helped to the town, the DPW. And they've done a great job in this building, and we hope it becomes a many years of a relationship with the Norfolk County Sheriff. So, thank you, Sheriff McDermott. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
And, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add lastly, and I've worked directly with Tom for a couple of years now, and I truly, truly, I don't think people realize what a great, great program this is. I know we're saying thank you, but this is truly a win. It's a win-win. It's a win for us. It's a win for your inmates that are going through this program. And I can't say enough about the inmates that have come through are polite, they're respectful, they'll work hard, they do anything that has been asked. And it's been just such an easy program to work with, so I can't say enough. So, thank you again, truly.
Likewise, every one of the vibe met has been just great. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we have another couple of announcements on the agenda. One is the Easter egg hunt.
Okay.
If we take it in that order, if that's okay.
Sure. It's an order.
You're about the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah, come along. Thank you.
All right. So, the Millis Recreation is having an Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 9th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Millis Town Park. It's free admission. You just bring a basket and a camera, and it sounds like a lot of fun. I will be there with my three children. Also, coming up this month, we have Millis Beautification Day, and that will be Saturday, April 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Registration should be done. There's also a waiver to fill out. It is rain or shine, but it's a great event every year, and it really helps pick the town up and spruce things up, and everyone gets out together. So, it's a great event. So, I encourage everyone to register. We're going to put, can we put this on the website?
It is. It's on the website.
This is on the website. You're going to want the email address to register. So, you can go to the millisma.gov and take a look there. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Okay. With that, with the announcements over, the first order of business this evening will be a review of the Council on Aging Fiscal Year '23 budget request. And for that, I'm going to ask our Director of the Council on Aging, Patty Kao, to come up and talk with us, please.
Hi, Patty Kao, Council on Aging. I was asked to come back and address a couple of issues. And one of the issues they want, the Select Board wanted to ask were the operation problems, trying to outline them. So, I sent you a little note, and I'm hoping that this will explain, and maybe you can understand what the problems are at the Council on Aging. In the past 12 years, the senior population has grown 75%. Since fiscal year 19, we've added six operational hours while making minimal changes to staff. Director, 3.5; outreach, two hours. We're seeing an increased needs in emergency services, housings, evictions, food stamps, Millis Fund, and fuel assistance. We're also having quite a demand for increased programming. We've been asked to do more programming, which we have. Currently, we have a department assistant in outreach positions that are scheduled on alternative days, which only leaves us fully staffed one day per week. So, what we're asking is to look at other comparable towns, and I provided a little graph there showing the other comparable towns, Grafton, Holliston, Littleton, Norfolk, Plainville. All senior centers have not only a director, but either a program coordinator or an assistant director, or they have three full-time staff. So, I think it shows that Millis is severely under staffed. And in this time, when we have so much need for the fuel assistance, evictions, we need to be fully staffed. So, I did present an over-service budget for another employee, for a program manager, for 18.5 hours a week. I understand from talking to Mike numerous times that that's just not in the budget. Mike asked me to maybe tone it down, to maybe see what we could do with 15,000. I really can't do it. That's 12 hours a week for a position, and we still wouldn't be staffed. So, what I'd like to do is go back to just funding the outreach worker, five hours per week. That will at least staff us fully two days a week versus the one day a week. And I think, you know, fiscally, I've been told that we just can't do it, so that's what we're willing to do.
Okay. We do understand the tightness of the budget right now. I'm going to ask town administrator to give you some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Director said, based on our current 4% cap and what we've requested at this point, and in consultation with the Finance Director, we do have about 15,000 available to put towards additional staff at the Council on Aging this year. In speaking with the Director again, she indicated that based on that, she'd be looking at the additional five hours for the outreach worker, and then looking to bring on a full-time employee next year to bring us closer in line with some of the comparable communities that were brought up. So, I'm not sure if, I think the five hours is about an additional $6,000 or $7,000 over your current.
Yeah, 6,148.
Right. So, again, that is, you know, that is really just a budget limitation we have based on the 4% cap. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board has, or, and the Finance Director could answer questions about the budget cap if there's questions.
I think at this stage, we all have to understand that we're very tight because of some unexpected expenses that we've been going over on the budget the last several, last couple of meetings, which includes unexpected expenses in schools, unexpected expenses here in town. So, we are trying to make ends meet on a very tight budget when we haven't anticipated a budget to be this tight this year. But I'm going to open it to the rest of the Board to comment.
Okay. So, try to follow me here. So, if you increased your program coordinator, outreach coordinator, who is this?
Outreach coordinator.
Thank you. Outreach coordinator, five hours per week, that's going to be, let's just round up to 6,150, right?
Mm-hmm.
But we have 15 available?
That's correct.
I really, truly wanted her to work the five days a week.
Oh, okay.
But she's union, and she said no.
Oh, okay.
So.
And there's, so I assume it's more complicated to just get somebody, another employee, and just for that short amount of hours, right?
I won't find a quality person for that.
Right. Yep, that makes sense.
And then I'll be juggling again.
And, I'm sorry to go back and forth here, but, so you currently have director, outreach, oh my gosh, I just lost it.
Department assistant.
Department assistant and dispatch receptionist?
Correct.
Okay. So, could extra hours be allocated to someone that's not the outreach to help with the department more?
That would just throw a body into the mix. We really need somebody with assistance for programming.
Okay.
Which, that's key.
Okay.
Currently, the Director does all the programming, five days a week.
Okay.
Which means I can't do my Director's job.
Right. Right. Okay. I just wanted to see if there was any way that any of it could help a little bit.
I've thought of everything, and I'm trying to think of everything.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. In that $75,000 of above level, what was the placeholder we had in here?
It was 11,000 and change.
And now we're talking the?
Now it would be around a little over 6,000.
Okay. Okay, I understand the reasons you're saying, if you can't find somebody who can do the job for you, it doesn't pay to just bring a body in.
It really doesn't make sense.
I just didn't know where we, if the 6,000 was in there, so that's about 5,000 extra that we have available.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. I get what you're saying, and I understand it, and I wish we could do more with it. It's just a tough time.
I'll be back next year.
I'm sure you will.
Please do.
Okay. At that, I'm going to, yes, Ellen?
Can I speak?
Yes.
Thank you, Patty.
First of all, there aren't too many people that would stand up here and refuse your money. So, take that piece, add it on for next year, because we're coming back for the full-time, right? And every year, budgets are tight, every year, it's a surprise, something, something. You have a whole year ahead of you to plan for a full-time person, because we're trying to push, maybe, for a senior center, and people are asking, we need more program, when we need more programming, to, you know, to substantiate that. And yet, this isn't helping. So, you need to understand how it all works, right? We all get that. So, let's try to make good on next year's full-time person. That's all. Thank you.
I will make a comment on that, and that is, we are well aware of the needs. We all support the seniors. The problem right now, as you well know, is we have a $300,000 shortfall from the schools. They have got to make up that money, or they're going to end up cutting staff. And they've already cut almost 200,000 out of their budget just to meet the need up there, because it was literally about a $500,000 shortfall that they ended up with. I can give the details, but it's not important at this point. If we don't fund them at that level, they are going to have to lay off personnel, which means teachers and the staff that supports the teachers. We're trying to avoid doing that. We also have a shortfall in the town as a result of, again, unanticipated expenses. We have obligations to meet that shortfall. We don't have a choice. So, it really comes down to where do you cut? And I think the Board has tried to review it to the best of our ability to come up with other options, and unfortunately, it does come out this way. Even the schools have put off any changes, upgrades, and other things that they wanted to do. So, we're all in a tight budget condition. We do know we had extra revenue coming in, thank goodness, because otherwise, we would have had to cut personnel in the schools. So, it's a very tough time in a year when we anticipated having, what, 700,000 or more in additional revenues available, but we've had to use those to keep things steady. We will do everything we can for the next year, and we are hopeful that we won't have a continuing problem. But I think Mr. Schultz has very eloquently put it to us on several occasions, that we don't know what's going to happen, and we can't sustain what's happened this year for ongoing years in the future. So, it's something we're going to have to address. It's not one that we're comfortable and happy doing, and I think Ms. Kao understands that. Given any other option, believe me, we'd staff her, so.
Yeah. I just want to be clear, the school did control their growth to less than 4% on the budgeted growth. There's a 300, there's a $500,000 bill from the state for special education that you can't ignore. I mean, it's not from the state, it's for kids that moved to our town.
That's exactly.
But the level of service we have to provide is going to be $500,000 increase over the prior year, and there's just no way to avoid that. And hopefully, it is not a recurring, because these kids age in and age out of the system. I've seen it go up in previous years. Hopefully, it goes, and it went down after that again. So, hopefully, it's a short-term, but I don't think it's a one-year, but I hope it's a short-term situation.
Look, it's a.
And we didn't increase their base budget to do it. We did it as a one-time allocation, so it's not going to be permanently inflating their budget by 300,000. But I get what you're saying. I wish we had the funds to do it, but we're looking at, staring down the barrel of a problem in '26 or '27, FY '26 or FY '27, just with the growth we have, because eventually, the new growth will stop. I mean, Glen Ellen will be built, the other sites will be built, and we'll be back to a half million, 600,000 a year of new growth.
Yeah, it's about a half million.
Not, we'll argue about this, 800 to 1.2 million of new growth that's going to come in this year. We're banking on 800. I don't think it's safe to bank on more than that. But 800,000 this year, we had 1.4 million last year, 1.2, 1.4.
1.2, I don't remember.
But those are numbers that aren't sustainable, they won't continue. And as we keep adding staff across the board, these three years of, or these years of great growth will be followed by years of great cuts. So, that's what we're looking at.
The object is to try to keep the town in balance to the greatest degree possible. It's a very severe balancing act right now. As Craig pointed out, this is as a result of out-of-district issues.
It's not out-of-district. It's not out-of-district.
That's what they call it.
It's sped placements that are out of service area. Out-of-district is the other.
Out-of-district is what it's called. At any rate, the point is, we have that. We also have in the town, the issue of the benefits, if you will, insurance and otherwise that we have to meet. So, those are not things we can say, no, no, we're not going to do it. Those are obligations. So, we put it all together, and we've come out with the best balancing act we can. It's very difficult. None of us like the fact that we don't have the options to do what we had intended, quite honestly, to do this year. It impacts everything that was planned.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. And I just want to add, not speaking for the Selectmen, but just for myself as the town administrator, and I have spoken with the COA Director about this, adding that additional staff for FY '24 is among my highest priorities, budget priorities for that year. And we will be meeting early, probably in the fall, to start discussing the planning for that, to have that put in the budget. So, it's something that I've taken seriously, and the Director and I have spoken about quite a bit.
Good. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to the next item on the agenda. And this is a review of the vote on application for water sewer abatement at 1130 through 1138 Main Street. And for this, I'm going to ask Mr. McKay, our Director at the DPW, to come up. I don't know, I don't see Ms. Canal.
Jen's here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jen, I'm sorry. I apologize. I didn't see you. Can she?
There she is.
She's muted.
She wants to stay that way.
There you go.
Bastin, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With me tonight is the treasure collector, Jen Scannell. I think you've read our response to Mr. Hocky's request for sewer, water and sewer abatement for his address on Main Street at 1130 through 1138 Main Street. Myself and Jen met with Mr. Hocky, and he presented his case to us. And it was determined at that time that the, you know, not at that time, that the meter was working properly and has continued to work properly from the issuance of the, of the overage. I mean, his average quarterly is 10,000 gallons a day, 10,000 gallons a day, 10,000 gallons a quarter, see, I'm into sewer. And it's actually, the bill came in at 141K for the quarter, which is substantial. So, both the DPW and Mr. Hocky checked the meter and his properties. I believe there's like four or five different stores that are on the one meter, and it came back that the meter was operating properly. It's the same meter that's in there today, and we've gone out several times and done drive-by testing with the gun, and everything seems to be appropriate. So, with that information that we had, we deemed that there was no abatement warranted. Mr. Hocky asked if a certain, and I'm sure he'll explain that here, but it was above our purview to make that decision on reducing the water bill in the amount that he was, he's going to ask you for an abatement. That's just not up to us to make that. And I believe, you know, we presented our case to the town administrator, and he agreed that this should be the next step for Mr. Hocky to move forward.
Okay.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't, actually, I don't know if the treasurer has anything to add to that before I speak, or are you all set, Jen?
No. I mean, I think Jim summed it up, you know, there was, it was an actual read that we got, so, you know, therefore, indicating that water was actually used. And just to follow up with Jim, on Jim's point is, on March 21st, we sent the DPW guys out there to get another read, and at that time, it is in line with what his previous history is. And so, he's really on track to be about 10,000, 11,000 gallons this quarter. So, again, it seems that the meter was functioning properly, but somehow, water was used, whether it was a leak or, you know, something.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add one more thing before the town administrator. We did offer Mr. Hocky, we do have a protocol in the DPW that the homeowner or business owner has the right to take the meter out and have it tested. And Mr. Hocky agreed that he felt that the meter was working properly, and he chose not to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, in your packet, you'll see that there's a letter from Mr. Hocky requesting that the Board, he's not requesting that he not be charged for the gallons, he's asking that the gallons, all the gallons used be charged at the normal base rate, since this was an unusual circumstance and an unusual spike from which could not be identified the cause. And so, the Board has granted that in the past in certain circumstances, if the Board feels it's appropriate. And I know Mr. Hocky is here. I didn't know if you wanted to hear from him before you further discuss it, but that is his request.
Are you recommending we move in that direction?
I am recommending that be considered by the Board based on the comments and testimony from Mr. Hocky.
And this does appear to be an unusual circumstance.
It's my understanding that his history is 10,000 or 11,000 gallons per quarter and that, or per billing cycle, and that the 141,000 was some sort of unintended leak from one of the, one of the businesses at that location, which has since been addressed because the current usage is back down to normal levels. So, again, I believe Mr. Hocky has paid the full bill as it was submitted and as is required for the abatement process. So, I think it's certainly within reason for the Board to consider that request.
Mr. Hocky, do you have something else to say?
Jim summed it up as it happened, and I gave a quick, you have a copy of my little note?
Yes, we do.
And it explains everything. And we really, I didn't have any leaks in, I'm there every day, so it is totally unknown. But I did, you know, if I Googled, I told Jim, I researched, it's very rare that any water meter would fault, especially since it's reading. And I've been monitoring, Jim suggested I just keep an eye on it every week. And you have all the information, as Jim said, but we never did know how the water was consumed.
Sure.
So, I thought that was, after listening to Jim and the little research that I did, and I thought it was appropriate to ask for this rather than, because I can't prove that, I just can't.
We understand. I'm going to open it to the Board for any comments that they may have.
I have one, but you can go first.
Okay. Jim, I was going to ask you, the higher rate for the more gallons is more of a, to encourage, to encourage conservation practices, right? We don't incur additional cost, per se.
Correct. It's based, correct, it's based on a tiered rate.
And that tiered rate's not because it costs us more for the whatever.
Well, it does.
Next gallon.
It does, because for every gallon that goes through, you're still paying for the treatment of the water.
Well, no, but that would be, but there's no incremental cost on that last gallon or the first gallon, is what I'm trying to get at.
Like, it would cost the same amount.
If a gallon of water, that first tier.
For you, it would be the same as the cost of the high use.
Right, right.
Right. It's more to discourage high use. Yeah, okay. Yeah, the first, whatever, 5,000 gallons cost, first gallon cost a buck, the next one, the last one still cost a buck, but we're trying to discourage that. Yeah, okay.
A buck fifty.
Yeah. 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 Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't incurring any actual cost that we needed to recover, because it doesn't sound like we are.
Go ahead.
Right. Jim, I don't know if you can paint me this picture, but out of curiosity, how long would a faucet have to be running?
Jen and I had that conversation just a little while ago. For something like this on that much, you're talking something that would have to be on, you know, a leaky toilet for, you know, almost a whole three quarters, you know, a full-force, depending on the size, you know, spigot, that could have ran for days, you know, a couple of days, if not, something of that, you know, magnitude. A sink, I mean, this isn't something that just occurs like overnight.
Right.
You're not going to use 141,000 gallons. I mean, that fills a pool up. I mean, that's.
Yeah. And it takes us three days to fill a pool off a hose, the outdoor pool, yeah, so.
Okay.
Well, are there any questions from the audience at this point? Well, are there any questions from the audience at this point? Okay, well, given that, I would like to submit to the board that we have a motion to allow the charge at the standard lower rate for Mr. Hocky.
So, moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You said you're going to be monitoring it at least once a week. And Mr. McKay, you monitor, you can monitor these things by going by with a gun or something to just read it.
So, they radio read? So, yes, we can.
Yeah. Is it a big inconvenience if every few weeks you were to go by and when you're doing other things, just take a reading to see if anything has changed?
So, we can do that, and Peter did say that he looks at the meter every day.
You don't have a problem?
Yeah.
You're sure?
Yes, yes.
We do, when, Jen, next week to do the, we're-
We're doing reads in another week, so, yeah, we're going back out pretty soon. But can I just clarify the motion? Is that for water and sewer to be billed at the lowest level?
Yes.
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 Because the one obviously feeds to the other in that case, so let's do both.
Mr. Chair, sorry, through the chair. Jen, is that, so the total would be the 130685?
Yeah, that is correct.
I'm trying to make sure we're on the same page here with the numbers. Okay, thank you.
So, is that satisfactory for you?
Yes, and that's, those were my calculations that I just-
Just want to make sure that we're all-
No, I thought that was a reasonable request.
Okay. Well, let's just keep an eye on it.
I promise I will. And because there was no readings in the eight hundreds.
Yeah.
So, if at the next reading, at nine, it jumps overnight.
Right. We'll know what's going on.
Yeah.
Exactly.
As I say, historically, they say in June bucket, it's very rare for a meter to give a lower function.
Sure. I always encourage someone, if they have a meter, don't change it. Because the new ones are just going to be more accurate.
Okay. Well, thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Appreciate it. Okay. The next item we have on our agenda is a presentation on classification and compensation study, final report from HR.gov.
Actually, that's been deferred.
Has it been deferred?
Yeah.
It's old agenda, I think.
Okay. I guess I have an old-
I'm looking at the one that was emailed out, and I've got capital planning.
Capital planning, yeah.
Yeah, which isn't till eight o'clock, so.
Oh, wow.
That's where I had a schedule.
So, I think we're going to take some of the next ones.
The next one, Mr. Chairman, is to review and approve updated local limits-
That's what I think we'll do.
For industrial pretreatment program.
So, Mr. McKay, you get to join us again.
So, I guess I have to ask, what did I actually send? Because I mean, there was like 400 pages.
This is what they have. We've only got 87 in the packet.
Yeah, it was just the letter, Jim.
So, I guess I would ask, this is a, the Charles River Pollution District is changing their discharge limitations, and this is for all industrial users. It's not just for, this is, usually comes from like the lettuce, the growing, the lettuce place in, so it wouldn't be for a residential person. I mean, they don't usually have these type of readings coming out of someone's house. If they do, then there's something going on. They're growing something more than what they shouldn't be. So, they, the board, the Charles River, they changed this. The difference is, we actually don't have, we just have sewer construction guidelines that we use, so it's not as they have, as their, what do they have, the discharge, their sewer attaches a chapter by law code. So, we don't have, our wording is a little different than theirs. So, this is what I would ask, if you choose to, how to vote, because if we don't, there's two ways we can do this. We can do it, you have the right as the water and sewer to change our guidelines, or we could make it a bylaw change.
How much of a change is it to our guidelines? Can you tell us that?
It's, this is just going to be inserted, because we don't have this in there.
Yeah.
This table will be inserted in our guidelines.
And that's just, and what does that really change for us?
So, when we give out, when somebody comes in for a sewer permit, they will receive our guidelines, and this, they'll see this table in there.
That's the new table that we're-
On industrial use.
So, it's strictly for industrial.
Yes.
And so, what we're, what you're basically saying is, we could, if we approve this, that makes the change-
That's correct.
That's necessary.
Yeah, it doesn't have to go to Tom Meter or anything like that.
Well, I have no problem, but I'll open it to the board if you have any concerns, discussion.
I don't have any.
I don't have any. I'm glad I didn't get 400 pages on this. It's nice.
Yes, thank you.
That's all, sir. I didn't know if I sent it.
Anyone in the audience have any concerns? Then I'll take a motion on this.
I move that we-
Hopefully, my spelling is.
Oh, my gosh. Is, was this-
We vote the Schedule A local discharge limitations table-
Be added to the town of miller sewer construction guidelines, yes.
Right, let's do that.
Second.
We move seconded to make the change to the local discharge table for the sewer guidelines. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that does it. Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barry is here.
Yes, I see that.
The Chair of the Capital Committee, so if you'd like to take this item up now.
Can we take it up early?
Yes, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a hearing.
So, these are simply just rough guidelines on the town. I'm better with this thing.
Then I'm going to ask Mr. Barry if he would join us, please.
We're checking.
Whichever is most comfortable, sit there, go up there, you choose. Mr. Barry, Jonathan Barry is the Chair of our Capital Planning Committee, so.
All right.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thanks for having me on a little bit early. It's great. So, you should have all received our draft of our capital planning report that we sent over late last week. We did make one small edit to it today, but it was pretty minor on the second page. I wouldn't have noticed it anyways. So, just a little background on the Capital Planning Committee. So, this committee's been around for about five years now, and we've been tasked with trying to assess all of the various capital needs of the town. So, we've spent a lot of time over the last few years just trying to get an inventory of all the capital in town and trying to map that out over the next 10-plus years to have a schedule of when everything is going to come due, so that townspeople can have a better idea of all the various capital requirements that are going to be coming down the road. As you can imagine, it's a very dynamic and fluid list. It always is moving and changing, but I think we're getting our arms around it pretty well. So, our process each, coming up before each town meeting, is to review all capital requests that are made by the various departments in town and try to prioritize those as best as we can, based on a set of criteria that we've established, which, taking into account a number of factors, public demand, employee safety, long-term, you know, planning and synergies with other things going on in town. So, we've got a number of criteria we look at. And we try to make it as objective as possible and go through a criteria and try to score everything as fairly as we can. It's not always easy, but we do our best. I will say, this go-around was probably the hardest one we've had since we've been doing this, and we spent a lot of time debating a lot of the items on the list. So, we had 12 items that were put forth to us. Actually, it's right with noting, there were a few more than 12. I don't remember, there was two or three that we decided as committee were not capital items. For example, there was one from the DPW for inflow.
Infiltration.
I and I, we said, that's not a capital item. That's just something you have to do. So, that's just an example of things where we've been moving things off of our capital list. But 12 things did come through that we did rank. Five of them, we decided after much, much debate, were the top of the list. And those five things, just for the record, or I should say, the highest priorities, were public safety radio backup power generators, public request by the emergency management office, public safety radio console update by the police and fire, that was sort of a joint project between the two departments, some sidewalk design and road repair from the DPW, a new pickup truck with a plow for the DPW, and a server replacement for the school department. So, those were the highest priorities. And I should just say, even though I'm going to go through highest medium and lower priorities, we do realize as a committee that all of these items are important. Just because something might be on the lower priority list does not mean it's not an important item that the town needs. Medium priorities were a skid steer for the DPW, replacement of lighting system, lighting management system at the library, a replacement pickup truck for the school department that had various plowing apparatus on it, and a skid steer also for the school. So, actually, there are two distinct skid steers requested. And for those who don't know what a skid steer was, because I didn't really know what one was before, it was on the Capital Planning Committee, it's sort of like a small tractor that can move things like a Bobcat, sort of a machine. And then the lower priorities were a tractor, the school has a tractor currently, they use for various things around the school, a message board from the DPW, and finally, the pickleball soundproofing from the rec committee. And on that item, I know that that has been an item that's gotten a lot of attention, and the committee acknowledges that is a very important item for the residents who live near that area. And so, while we got a lower score on our kind of ranking system that we do, we are acknowledging that is a worthy thing to be addressing, so, put it at that. So, why don't I, I'll pause there, and I'm happy to take questions on any items we talked about, the process.
Got a question.
Okay. I have a few comments and questions. These are on the warrant as of now, except for things like the computers, the servers, correct?
It's actually all listed in the draft warrant article you have for capital. I believe that's Article 13.
Right.
So, that's for the board's discussion later this evening-
That's for later.
-as to how you want to lay out that article. As I had mentioned in my memo to the board, not all of those items are within our funding ability, so some decisions will have to be made ultimately as to which items will be funded and which will not.
Okay.
So, and then it's the board's determination whether you want items left on the warrant in that article that are not able to be funded, to take it up at town meeting, or whether you want to put the article simply that our priority could be funded on there. So, that's something that I know the board had an interest in discussing.
So, the only thing I'm going to ask you, since I have a background in this on the servers, did you get a thorough justification from the schools on the servers and why they might not be moving to the cloud instead?
Yeah, we did talk to the school a couple of times around the servers, and we actually had them come back in a second time to get more detail, because that was an item that we had questions about. The proposed, the original proposal they had was for physical servers to be housed at the school, but they had indicated they had looked at a cloud-based option as well, but had determined that it would be too expensive. And so, you know, from our perspective as the Capital Planning Committee, we certainly care about costs, but costs in some respects is a secondary factor. It might even be tertiary factor in what we look at. So, we asked them to come back with more detail on that cloud option. And it was, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was substantially more expensive. We, as a committee, generally felt that going to the cloud was probably a better option, but to be honest, we are not tech experts, with perhaps the exception of Miss Sandra Hill, who knows far more about it than the rest of us on the committee. So, to some degree, we had to take the school at their word as to what was going to work best for their situation there. But we certainly did have a lot of questions about it, and we wanted to make sure that it was, you know, going to be a good long-term solution. There was discussion about how this would coordinate with the Clyde Brown School servers, which at some point will be, need to be upgraded or replaced in the next, I forget how many years it was, five years or something. And also discussions about whether there'd be any opportunity to leverage off of the town's networks, which had recently gone to the cloud as well. And, you know, again, we had to take the school expert's opinion, you know, for what they told us, which was they felt that going with this solution was the best and most cost-effective way to go.
John, they're having a hard time hearing you, I think, so if you want to pull the mic door, do a little bit. Thank you.
All right.
And the other one is the emergency management office. I know, having talked with police, fire, and so on, their needs, the generators and everything, this is inclusive installation, the whole, everything that's required to make this function?
That is my understanding, yes.
Do they have anything that's replacing now?
Yes.
And?
Yes, this is replacing the existing system that is, you know, on its last legs.
Okay, that's what I, so the old, the system is old, and as I understand, the old system, the radio consoles and everything have to be upgraded, they're no longer-
Yeah, from what I recall, it's exactly, it's like an obsolete system-
Right.
-that just is not supported or anything anymore. Yeah.
Okay, just trying to make sure I understand that. I think the other things we've discussed, so, okay, I'll open it to the board.
Yeah, my suggestion is, going forward, we just leave roads off of the committee's work. I mean, that seems to be a separate item. I'm looking at most of the, everything else on this list falls into the area of, you know, one-time purchase, not infrastructure for the town. And I think there's a lot on here. And we're going to fund roads separately as a separate warrant article. I would suggest, going forward, that the committee doesn't evaluate roads and sidewalks in their priority, because that comes to us from the DPW as a separate item. And I'd like to see it as a standalone warrant article and not as part of the CPC's recommendation.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
We both have the same number, you know, 160, so it's going to be funded.
I'm actually surprised that it was on as a capital item.
Yeah, road, we, we had, when we originally started our capital assessment, we had identified road repair, basically, as a recurring, I mean, you could debate whether it's capital or not. I hear what you're saying. So, I'll certainly take that up with the committee next time we meet, and we can just decide how we want to proceed on that.
And not that, I mean, because we're going to look to fund it elsewhere, so it doesn't affect your bottom line that we're trying to find here, because we pulled that 160 out.
I would just say, we don't, just to be clear, we don't have a bottom line.
Right.
So, we don't, again, we care, but we care, but we don't care about the cost. We're just trying to, we're trying to prioritize, yeah.
And, and then the pickleball is a low priority. Why'd you rate that so low as a low priority?
Again, we've got a set of criteria. There's, well, there's several, there's sort of a two-dimensional criteria we go through to rank everything, and it comes out with a score. And just on a lot of the items that would normally get a kind of, things that sort of raise the score are going to be things like public safety, you know, employee health, you know, things where you have to have it or else the town is in some degree of peril, you know? So, it wasn't sort of getting the points that come with some of these more, those types of items, so it ended up with a fairly low score. That said, you know, we certainly understand the issue it's causing for the neighbors there.
I also think it's important to understand that, once it comes to this board, we have the ability to move things around as we choose. Not that we shouldn't, should do it, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying, that's the prerogative we've left ourselves, and we have to take into account. One other question on the pickleball.
I'm sorry, I had another question about the pickleball.
Oh, because I thought there was a different funding source.
Well, that's, well, that's my question, because unlike, as I've advocated for removing the roads, even though, and I'm buying your agnostic on funding source line, I get that. Even though we have a separate funding source, should we be devoting any town funds to an item that, in my mind, clearly is in the purview of this committee, that is a low priority? Yeah, and, you know, in other words, just, it's not a grant. I mean, it is funds the taxpayers are paying that we're putting towards something. It's not taxation, but it's CPC funds. I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm not saying we aren't going to. I'm just wondering, you know, do we want them to evaluate everything, come back to us, then we decide the funding on it? Which is the way I think we would like to go. on it, which is the way I think we would like to go, and just because it's being funded by another source, that, a grant's different, a grant fund is something that's outside the scope of this. But do we want to prioritize something just because another committee wants to fund it?
I'm not following, I'm sorry, help me.
I'm sorry, all right, let's say, okay, is there another use for the CPC funds in the future that is a high priority that we just don't know about yet? And by committing 19,000 of CPC funds to a low priority, are we precluding doing that in the future? Just because we have the money and a committee that's willing to spend it, do we spend it on a low priority item?
Oh, well, I mean, the other CPC that would be funding this?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
That's CPC.
Has very specific criteria for which they would fund a project.
Yep.
So it couldn't literally be any random thing on the list. This fell into the right criteria for them to approve it.
Right, and?
So it's a little different.
But it's still technically a capital item.
Right.
So it's a difficult issue, but I think that it makes sense for the committee to be looking at all capital items, and if different funding sources make themselves available, and I do know CPC stepped up to this, I won't say last week, but, you know, within the last few weeks. So it does make sense to have it on here, in my estimation.
Yeah.
But it's not one that we necessarily are going to worry about in terms of the funds once a committee like the CPC makes the decision that they can, in fact, fund it because it meets their criteria and it's important to the community.
One thing I want to say, just to follow Craig's, is that the, I'm fine with it being where it is, right?
Yeah.
I'm also, obviously, it's great that there's a body that can fund that. I think sometimes the problem that we face is a communication issue, where sometimes we don't know that somebody else is going to fund that. And if we're factoring that into our consideration of where we want to place this after receiving the rankings, then that can be a little difficult.
Right.
But this, and I think we had that problem last year, so.
Yeah, that's what I was going back to.
Yes, yep.
Last year, we had an item, which item was that?
Oh, my god.
Was it a playground or?
It was fixing.
Oak Grove Farm?
Oak Grove Farm Playground, I thought.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Fixing that area up there.
Yep, it was in two different places, so that, yeah, that's where the problem was. So the, I feel like we've done a better job with communication between the different, you know, bodies to know what's happening with them, but I do like this being a global list. Do you know what I mean?
I do, I just did not, I just did try to avoid spending money because we have money to spend versus spending money on a priority, because that $19,000 won't go away from the Community Preservation Act, I'm stopping calling CPC, it'll still be there in the future if there was another project to do it for. If this is a low priority for the town, just because we have $19,000 doesn't mean we have to spend $19,000, as I've been telling my children for the last 20 years. But, so it's, you know, if this is a priority and it truly is something that we want to do, then that's great, I'm glad CPC can fund it. But if it's our lowest priority item, the fact it's on the list, I guess, still cuts it for me.
Mr. Chairman? Scott, please.
Sorry, I guess I'd like to start by just thanking Mr. Berry and the members of the committee, they do excellent work, I do try to attend most of their meetings, and they do have very spirited and in-depth discussions on these items, so these items are very well-vetted for the board and for the town. Getting to the discussion of the CPC funds and whether they should be funding items that are lower on the list, I think, and looking back, for the very reason that the CPC was established, is that in many towns, because of the tight budgets, the types of projects that CPC, the, I'm sorry, Community Preservation, I'm not talking about the, yeah, works with, have to do with items that historically have gotten lower priorities because, you know, is a fire truck or a police cruiser always more important than an open space study. And that's the type of challenge that things are really needed by the community, but they always lose those priority battles. So that's really where I see here, that this, there's very few items on this list that would actually qualify for CPC funds.
Right.
But of all the ones that are being looked at now, this is one of the most important, based on the feedback we've gotten from the community, specifically that portion, and therefore, even though it shows up as a lower item here, I think from the perspective of what the Community Preservation Committee is looking at, it's still a fairly high priority or should be, so it is a tough comparison to make.
And I was right there with you until Mr. Berry said that we don't look at cost, because when you're trying, you know, and, because that's, that's when I said, well, why are we looking at funding a low priority item when $19,000 could go to a theoretically high priority item that might come along next year that now we won't have it for?
But can't go.
But I'm okay, I don't need to beat this to death on it, I just, I was right there with you on the CPC funding until you said we don't look at cost.
I think it's important to correct that, he does look at cost, it's just not the overriding issue in there.
Well, the funding, the funding.
Not the funding source.
That's right, the funding source.
Well, that's why I meant by saying cost, I'm sorry, the funding source, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr.
Could I just make one other comment that I think, it's noted in the report, but I just want to say it here? So one thing that I think's been a very positive outcome of this is, and not that this wasn't happening before, but I think we've been able to prompt more of it happening, with the DPW and the school, really having them working together, thinking about how to best kind of cross utilize equipment. And they've done a lot of that already, so they do a good job now, but I think, I think they've been kind of taking it to another level now to be thinking even further about that, so I think that's one positive outcome of this.
It's a very important outcome, it's one that we, I know there are discussions ongoing right now as a result of what you've done in your committee to help point out the issues like two skids, plows, and so forth, and those negotiations, including building maintenance, facilities maintenance, if you will, and other things, are all under discussion right now. And you've been a motivating factor in that, so thank you very much. The town needs that, it's the consolidation of resources in a way that makes more sense for the town in the long run, so thank you. I will also say, having been on that committee for a while, you've done a superb job over the last several years, so, again, thank you for all the time and effort that you and your committee members have put in to come up with these lists.
Yeah, I have another question on the list, too.
Please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I, thank you for everything you've done, but.
Stop thanking me.
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to get a question, I wasn't going to start the thank yous, yeah. All right, I'm moving to the top of the list. Explain to me the, why this Chevy Silverado with plow is a high priority item, I'm not saying it shouldn't be, I just need a reason to hang my hat on why it's there.
Yeah, it's replacing an existing truck.
It's replacement of existing.
That is, you know, really at the end, end, end of its life, that is much needed for, you know, road, not just plowing, but also just general DPW work, yeah.
No, that makes sense, just the replacement's a good reason, I just wasn't sure why it was there. Skid steer, I got, library lighting, okay. By the same token, the school's falling to the middle level, that, is that because it's not a replacement, would that be a new vehicle?
Well, the truck is a replacement, I mean, again, we debated long and hard on these ones, and so, you know, that was a tricky one, but the truck is a replacement, it will need to be replaced at some point. You know, again, this might be somewhere where some more coordination can happen. The skid steer is, would be new, the school does not currently have one.
They've been asking for answers since we built the school.
The DPW rents, well, the DPW has a few, but they do have one that they currently rent, or lease, or whatever, it's rented, sorry, rented, that, this would replace. But, I don't know, we were struggling a little bit with.
The school rents one, too, don't they?
Now that you say that, I believe the school does actually rent one as well, yeah.
But the justification, as I recall, Mr. McKay pointed out, was pretty severe in terms of the periods that they need it, the amount of rental, the availability.
Right.
There were a whole series of issues that he's beginning to encounter as a result of a variety of things, manufacturing and so forth.
Right, right.
The product isn't available now necessarily when they need it, and that makes a big difference, so.
Yeah, I mean, we rent one for each of our facilities all winter. We didn't have trouble getting it this year, but it was, we're good clients, so they were happy to rent to us, but I know what you're saying. There's going to be a period of time when these things just aren't available.
Yeah, and I'd say, there are times when, where something falls on the list into these three categories, and one thing I'll just point out, just because something is at the top of the highest priority list, it's just a highest priority. Don't read too much into the order they are within that, that just those five things are the highest. But these few things at the top, they were very, very, very high priorities. If those things didn't come up for capital items this time around, then it's pretty likely that the skid steer and the lighting system and the pickup truck with plow would have been the highest priorities. You know, so it's all relative, something that might be medium now might be high later or low later, depending on what else is kind of under consideration.
Okay.
I have a question, probably more for Mr. Kaczynski, I think. So, based on this presentation, is it expected that we're now going to have a conversation based on what we know we have available for capital funds?
Yes.
Or is that going to happen when we open the warrant?
That'll happen when you open the warrant.
Okay, just want to know when I'm supposed to talk about that.
That's the warrant discussion.
So the chair of the Capitol Committee is here to answer any questions about.
Prior to that, yes.
Their process and about the items, from a funding perspective and making decisions about which ones should ultimately get funded based on the availability of funds, that's a separate discussion fully into this evening.
Okay. And Mr. Berry, I also want to thank you.
Well, thank you, Erin, for being on the committee.
You do excellent work.
Doing a great job.
Can I, just to remind you, what was the amount of money, and I'm not saying.
Two hundred thirty-one thousand.
Two thirty-one, thank you.
Right.
I have to start with the ended mine.
That's the general fund available revenue.
Yep.
Right, so some of the items there would also be funded by some of the enterprise funds based on their usage.
Oh, that's good to know.
Mm-hmm.
That's really good.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have a quick question, I think, for Mr. Berry. Has the committee talked at all about doing an overall facility study for the town as far as the buildings? Because I know you have the replacement of the lighting management system for the library.
Yeah.
Because that was kind of put forward as a one-off, but we don't really have a full list, right, at this point, of just the facilities pieces?
Right, so, it's a great question, so yes, we have, this has come up over the last couple of years of doing a full, you know, facilities review of all the buildings. It's never quite come together for various reasons. We do have, on the, one thing that's shared is the master list, which should, so a lot of those things are in there, but they're sort of scattered, you know, so it's, there are things that are going to find a way there. I do think that is worthwhile doing, I think we'd have to assess how much that costs, but I think it's worth, it's absolutely worth doing over the next year or so.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about it a little, just for this building alone.
Yeah, yeah.
And not the overall town, but clearly, it would be good to do the overall town so we know where everything's at.
There may be a proposal coming before the Capitol Committee over the summer, for a future meeting.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and I do just want to make sure people do take a look at this part, page two, or page three, I suppose it is, because that's where we do have all of the capital, accumulated capital needs that we've assessed so far. And just for the record, it is $78 million of potential capital needs, so I'll just leave you with that.
Thanks.
We'll fund it the day after tomorrow.
Yeah, we have that, no worries.
I'll open it to any questions from the audience. Scott.
Oops, sorry. Thank you, Scott, you're the 411 News, we'd like to thank the Capitol Planning Committee, I think they've done a great job, it's been a need for the town for a lot of years, and so, so thank you for what you and your people do. I wanted to ask one thing on town facilities, Mr. Chairman, maybe the town manager could answer, Mike, has the town looked, with other communities doing a regionalization, you know, maybe, you know, you have another, you regionalize with another town building, that what they could come in, work a couple hours in that town, a couple hours in this town, and, you know, to save cost by regionalizing the town maintenance facilities and stuff like that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we actually haven't, haven't looked at other communities, but we, as the board's aware, we're in the process of looking at having a combined facilities maintenance plan with the school department, since the school has an outstanding facilities maintenance program and team at work, and we've had discussions with the school administration about, about working with them, for them to take over the municipal building facilities maintenance. And I believe one of the articles on the warrant you'll be discussing later tonight will discuss that shared services model.
That's exactly.
So, we're thinking about it.
We're getting there, it's just going to take a little time.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman, sorry, I was doing math in this, that's why I asked for the number. Mr. Berry, could you tell me about the library lighting, the $30,000 there?
Sure. So the library, when it was built, had a lighting management system that has had a lot of problems, and from what I understand, the company that installed it is no longer in business, and I think even the brand that is there is not, you can't, you know, buy it anywhere else, so they have a lot of problems where the lights go on and off at kind of unsuspected times, and, you know, there's sort of, you know, manual fixes that have to be made, so I think they're worried that one of these days, the lights are going to go off and they're not going to be able to turn them back on. So that's, that's the reason for it.
For what it's worth, I understand that they're also looking at a more centralized lighting management system that would control some DPW, as well as library buildings, all from a central location. This is all an ongoing study, and in fact, funding is being considered for, I think it's what, $25,000?
Twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand.
It's actually the next item on your agenda.
Does that item relate to this capital item directly?
Not directly, but it's indirectly.
Would the, would we not do this $30,000 until we finish that study, is that?
I would suggest that we're going to have to hold a little right there.
Yeah, that'll be part of my recommendations this evening, I think we'll take that into consideration.
Only because I'm looking at the available and what is mandatory, and there seems to be a little bit of a gap.
There is, so, in your packet?
No, no, I mean, between the most important items, and then the 231 available, it seems like.
We're about $200,000 short, so there's going to have to be a, I will go over that later this evening.
Let's deal with that the next, when we open the warrant, okay? Any other comments or questions from the audience? Mr. Berry, thank you very much, we really do appreciate what you've done, and it's very thorough.
All right, thanks for having me.
So we do appreciate that.
Have a good night.
Good evening.
Thanks, John.
Okay, nuts, I just managed to close the one thing I didn't want closed, so I need to.
Mike, did that 230 include the roads 160 that we have a separate article?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so, or the trees, yeah.
So, the next item on our agenda was capital planning, we went there, so now we get to the approval of Millis Public Library Assessment Contract.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a contract with Gorman Richardson Lewis Architects, in the amount of $22,500, to conduct a review of all the library facilities. The funding for this is coming from a grant that the library received, so no taxpayer money, thankfully. And they have gone through the procurement process, and this contract in your packet has been reviewed and approved by town council, and I'm asking the board this evening to authorize me to execute this, well, actually, looking for the board's signatures, which we can get those documents back to you, for the approval of this contract, again, for a library facility study for $22,500.
Okay, I did read through it, although I have to admit, I didn't read all of the text, but it does look to be quite comprehensive, they're covering quite a bit of ground on this, including the lighting systems and so forth. I, you know, I could ask questions, but the truth is, it appears that there are a number of things that do need to be checked, so I'll ask the board if you have any concerns or comments.
No, detailed what they were looking at, but it was quite detailed, I think I know Scott Richardson, too, I think at that point I was working at Hopkinton, he was, he did work for me back then, and that was in the 90s, so.
Yeah, it's a very well-known company.
Yeah, I don't think he was when I was using him, when he started.
Okay, you gave him a break on the early days.
I think he actually was a volunteer on the board of the YMCA and did volunteer work on some design work for us, but long ago, no conflict of interest now.
I move that we approve the contract for the library facility study in the amount of $22,500, $22,500, which is procured via a grant.
And do we want to allow the town administrator, to whatever degree possible, to sign the contract?
Help you to sign.
Certain things we have to sign, certain things.
Sure, you can authorize me to sign it.
Okay, and to authorize the town administrator to sign the contract on our behalf.
Yeah.
Second.
I moved seconded to authorize, to sign the contract for the library study, facility study, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, in the amount of $22,500. All opposed, motion carries unanimously, so we will have to sign this later on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next item on the agenda is review and approve the personnel plan adjustments, and Mr. Kaczynski, we're going to ask you to review that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as the board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, as the board used to do every year, to look at adjustments to the personnel plan, put forward a town meeting for approval. Asking for a number of adjustments this evening, just to note that the town really hasn't made any adjustments, other than the annual salary adjustments per a COLA decision. The town hasn't made any changes to this in probably at least six or seven years.
November of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, so about seven years. So, for this meeting, Mr. Chairman, we're asking for some changes to the plan to be considered. I can go through those, I think everyone has a copy of the information on the plan, I think it's highlighted in yellow, the items for consideration of change. The longevity here, and the personnel plan on page seven, would look to be updated, to be similar to that of the other unions in the community, to bring that up to the level that they're at. The next item is the, just a language change on maternity leave, to change the terminology to parental leave, to meet the required standards of federal and state law. That's on page ten. The next change would be on page eleven, simply adding some clarification language under sick leave, reserving the right of the town administrator to request a doctor's note verifying the need for sick leave after three consecutive days of sick leave use. And again, that language is fairly similar to our union language, so we're trying to maintain some consistency. Item F on the same page, to increase the sick leave buyback from eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred upon retirement. That's also on page eleven. On page thirteen, under paid holidays, the addition of Juneteenth, which was just added as part of the police contract, as a paid holiday. On page fourteen, personal leave, to adjust from two to three days, which again is in line with several of the union contracts. Under bereavement leave, changing the language to update, again, similar to languages found in our employment contracts. Same thing with jury duty, making a change of that language to also make that in line with generally our employment contracts. And then, on the personnel plan schedules, recommending a two percent adjustment for FY twenty-three, that matches the agreed-upon adjustment in the police union contracts, which the board just approved, and also the addition of a position of Assistant Town Administrator, in line with the review and classification compensation study just completed by HR Gov. So, those are the changes that we're recommending, and again, these are based on really trying to update some of the older language, and again, these just sort of fell a little behind, but we felt it was necessary to try to update these, to bring them in line with both state law and with similar language we have in the different employment contracts.
Mr. Chair, I was going to say, just to add, this only, the only three people who are benefited employees, there are only three benefited employees on the personnel plan. All other full-time and benefit people are covered either under a union contract or an individual contract and employment contract.
And what positions are those three benefited employees?
Those would be the operations manager, the DPW director, and the council and aging director.
Okay, just want to make sure.
So, those are the only three full-time benefited employees that are not covered within one of the union contracts, or an individual employment contract.
How about the finance director?
She has an individual employment contract.
Contract.
Totally separate, yep.
I just want to make sure it's all clear to the audience.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions from the board members?
No.
I move that we approve the edits to the personnel plan for the town of Milis.
Second?
So, move seconded to approve the changes to the personnel plan as presented by the town administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Okay, it's come to that time of night when I'm going to recommend we open the town warrant.
I move that we open the town warrant.
So, move seconded to open the town warrant, I believe I have to poll the board individually. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, the town warrant is now open. I'm going to ask the town administrator to go through the various issues that we need to discuss in the town warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My intention is not to go through every article this evening, unless, you know, the board has specific questions or would like to discuss those articles, merely the articles that I'm recommending changes or notifying of updates to those articles. The first would be Article One, right now, the numbers aren't currently listed in the article. I have had a number of discussions with the finance director. This item has to do with unpaid prior-year bills. We do expect that the total of those prior-year bills will be under five thousand dollars, and those will be included and filled in in the warrant prior to your meeting next Monday, where you're going to vote, hopefully, to approve and sign the warrant, so I just wanted to update you on that. The second item has to do with, that I'd like to address, is the capital item, which we discussed a little bit earlier this evening. So, the finance director and I discussed this at length, in regards to the revenues available for funding of the items as ranked by the Capital Planning Committee. We do have approximately two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in general funds available to put towards these projects, as listed in Article thirteen in your packet. As part of that, there's also several items that are listed in there from the DPW, that would also have some funding coming from the enterprise funds, in the amount of ninety-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars. So, just to go through the items briefly, the first is for the public safety radio console update, that's a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. Emergency management public safety radio backup generators at twenty-five thousand dollars. The DPW Chevy Silverado with plow, fifty-four thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars, of which thirteen thousand six hundred and four dollars would be funded from the general fund. We have listed under the...
I'm sorry, how much from, did you say, general fund, or?
Yes, the general fund portion of that would be one quarter, so that would be thirteen thousand six hundred and four dollars.
Okay.
The schools, we have a computer server replacement for one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, that was discussed early this evening. For the DPW, we have a skid steer at fifty-two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, of which thirteen thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars would be funded from the general fund. We have the library for the replacement of the lighting management system at thirty thousand dollars. We have a request for a skid steer from the school department at sixty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. I think that was the original request, but I'm not sure if that will be the final number, I do need to confirm that. We do, again, also from the school, have a request for a pickup truck with plow, dump body, and sander for sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars, and then a DPW message board for nineteen thousand four hundred dollars, of which four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars would be covered through the general fund. That's a total of five hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars in requests that are listed in the current article. If you subtract that from the available funds, which is three hundred and twenty-six thousand and ninety-eight dollars, we have a deficit there of approximately two hundred and four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, based on that, in looking at the different priority levels put forth by the Capital Committee, I am recommending that of those, the following three items be deferred until the fall annual town meeting for funding. That would be the school computer server replacement of one hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, the library lighting system of thirty thousand dollars, and the school pickup truck with plow and sander at sixty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. Just to note that the school department did list the skid steer as their highest priority piece of equipment for the schools, so that's why I'd be recommending that for the piece of equipment. And this essentially, with the removal of those, it puts us within about a thousand dollars of balancing, and in speaking with the finance director, we should be able to, in the rounding, be able to find a thousand dollars to make that difference. So, currently, as I said, you have all those items listed in that article, and it would be up to the board to determine which, how you'd like that article to read for consideration of the finance committee and town meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I just, this is more just a question for clarification. I'm going to word this a different way, maybe you can just tell me if I'm right, okay? Are you saying that the entire list that was given to us by the Capital Planning Committee of high, medium, and low priorities, minus the roads and sidewalks and the pickleball, are accounted for in this plan, subtracting the school computer server, library lighting system, and school pickup truck? We'd be funding everything else?
All the high and medium items.
All the high and medium, okay.
And the, some of the low items, such as the, again, the soundproofing for pickleball, that is not covered within this.
Right, right.
It's covered through a separate article, as well as the message board was listed as a lower item, but that is, that is because of the fact that it only has an impact of the, on the general fund, the four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, it can be added in there. The other items are just simply of a magnitude that we could not add in there.
Yeah, I mean, so that's, yeah.
That's more of a rounding to, of the funds available, but it is lower, it's rated lower than a few of the other items that are getting deferred, but again, those items are much more expensive to the general fund.
Okay.
Okay, the message board?
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, the message board. I know it's been our practice to take one quarter of most things and put it towards each of the enterprise funds and the general fund. Is it truly something that twenty-five percent of that is sewer, twenty-five percent of that is water, twenty-five percent is stormwater? Or is it?
Well, I would, you know, certainly I would defer it to the DPW director, but I will say, I think the idea behind the board was to notify folks if there's a water main break, if there's problems with stormwater in the area, if there's flooding, if there's other issues, so I think it opens it up to be used by all those areas, but it was, again, I think it's defendable, it was put forward by the DPW director as a four-way split for funding, so I don't know if...
Yeah, I just wasn't sure, just, I just hate to have our knee-jerk reaction, position B, one-quarter splits on everything, when I don't know how much of it, it's not so much water and sewer, because I can see the use there, as you said, with breaks and road damage and everything else. Stormwater was always a stretch for me.
Flooding, though.
Yeah, yeah, that's more, that's more road. I mean, that's not...
Well, the road is flooded out due to bad drainage or a drainage problem with the stormwater.
I can rationalize it, too, but to me, it's, I mean, a flooded road is the highway department, just, in my opinion, you know, but I could make a case for it, it's not that much, but, yeah, okay.
Any other comments?
I, for the most part, I'm good with this. I struggle a little bit with the computer server replacement.
Well, that's being deferred at this point.
I know, I know, I know, but I still struggle with that a tiny bit.
Yeah, well...
But hopefully, hopefully it doesn't have any issues prior to the fall, and we'll handle that then.
Yeah, I mean, from what I brought up, and I have talked with others, that we need a much better justification than we've received, but that's not, I think, important at this point. We have a recommendation of how these things should be funded and what should be funded in the article at this time, so I think that's what we want to deal with. Is there any?
I have another question, yes. So, you're recommending the school's skid steer?
Yes, that was their highest priority of their equipment.
My question to them would be, since we're short on the sped money, they asked for three fifty or three sixty, and we came up with three hundred. Is it their highest priority versus budget cuts, or is it their highest, because they've been asking for a skid steer since we conceived of the Clyde Brown School, they tried to get it into the building project everywhere else. Is it, is it more important, and this is a question we can't answer, we need them to answer, is the skid steer more important than?
Sixty-one thousand dollars more to go towards the deficit.
Fifty thousand, if that's how much they're short.
Sixty-one thousand, yeah.
Call it fifty thousand, but to go toward the...
I would get feedback from them on that one before I voted it, because they do successfully rent, I think if you get your rental request in, you've been a good client, we've had no trouble renting hardware.
I think that's a fair question.
That's a decision of the board, if you want to...
Let me suggest, if we want, we vote what's been proposed, with the exception of the skid steer, because we're going to wait to get the information back.
Yeah.
At least that gets those items into the warrant, if we agree that we want to do that, and we keep it open, we'll open it again.
Yeah.
If the schools come back with a decision that they prefer to have a skid steer, but I think Craig's comment is very, very prescient in this case.
Yes.
Yeah, and I would...
Because they're really stretched there.
I would say you vote it as proposed by Mike, and we just remove the skid steer on the motion.
That's the other way of doing it.
Okay.
If that's what comes back, then we can get it all in and get it over to the finance committee for discussion as well.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Now, the other piece of that is that, it was my understanding that the DPW is trying to work with the schools and determine whether or not we really need two skid steers for the town.
No, we do.
And, no, I'm just bringing it out, because this is an issue that keeps coming up, and so I know that, as we're discussing, further management of facilities and so forth, and an understanding that if we are to consolidate, the schools will get priority for certain things. I think it's important, if this DPW director is willing to let us know his view on this, I'd be very interested, but only if you're willing to discuss that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the idea of the two skid steers, the DPW, we do have three skid steers, there's no secret about that, it's never been, and one of the skid steers that was purchased, it was purchased through the Chapter Ninety funding, and it doesn't fit the sidewalks. The second one that we have is actually a smaller one, it was purchased just to do the hill, this was before I got here, going up towards butter bings and stuff like that, it's not wide enough to do the rest of the sidewalks. So, we do have one, right now, that we do the sidewalks with, and we have been renting it because of the holder is, although we're keeping it, and we can share anything with the school department, we've told them that, if they need one of those skid steers during the summer, like we do anyways, they can, you know, we can truck it over to them, and they can borrow it. So, I did hear, we did apply for one through a grant, we should hear by the end of the month, you know, but the response that I got today from the state was that a lot of people, it was the largest group, so naturally we'd be able to pull it off if we do get that grant.
If you, could you support the schools with the equipment you've got, say, on a snow day?
See, that's the only, that's the only time that we both need the skid steers, exactly at the same time.
Right.
To clear the sidewalks and getting the walking route, Plain Street, Pleasant Street, that area, Main Street, around the school, that's exactly when we need it. We do have a plow that they, they came down, they looked at, and they just, you know, they didn't want to do it.
Would the plow have worked?
It probably, yes, I think it could.
For the sidewalks?
For their sidewalks, yes.
So, the answer is, we could, at least for the time being, work out a way... So the answer is, we could, at least for the time being, work out a way to assist them. You...
With the machine repair.
I'm going to put words in your mouth, so be careful on this, but you could conceivably hold off on some of the town sidewalks while you get the schools cleared out in preparation for the students, and then move everything back to the town.
So we couldn't, without the manpower that we have, we couldn't, because we're down, we're down twenty-four to four contractors that help us plow on the street. So we could lend them the machine that we have in the garage, so they could do their sidewalks, if they can, if they, for some reason they can't rent one, or if they don't get one.
So you have a machine they could use.
Yes.
And it's available if they need it.
That's correct.
So the question then, in my mind, is, why would we put this on the warrant as an item when DPW says they have a machine that can be loaned in these, I'll call it snow days, I don't know what else to call it, but in those conditions?
I was under the impression, though, from the CPC meetings, that that wasn't an option, that you both needed the same equipment at the same time, hence their request for the skid steer.
No, they, they, the machine that they came down and looked at, they just didn't want to use it.
Oh.
That, that we have, that we have what we call the holder. It's a multi-purpose machine, and the hydraulics has gone on it, but it still has the operation that they can use the, the plow. It still turns both ways, that they could use a plow on it. I think their, their explanation was that they need the, the plow, their skid steer for more than just snow plowing. They use it during cleanups, which, that's what a skid steer does. I mean, you, you can buy so many multiple attachments for that, that you can clean a brush, you can cut trees down with it, you can, depending on the multi, and that's what they want. They wanted it for year-long use, not, you know, not just a...
You have, you have pieces of equipment that they could borrow for doing just that, correct?
Yes, for plowing, and if they needed a skid steer, they could borrow one.
And all those things, so...
We did get that file with them.
Or they can continue to rent if they can find it, which, you know, for the winter.
Yep.
So are you angling to say that maybe we take the skid steer off proactively and just give them the sixty-one grand for their...
I'm listening to what, quite honestly, I've heard from DPW for some time, and what I've tried to understand. And quite honestly, I'm not a skid steer expert, so it's very difficult. But I have to believe our DPW director when he, when he tells us what they can do. And to that end, my feeling is, if we've got pieces of equipment that can be, can be used, even if they're not the most ideal, and they're willing to share them and work with them, I think it behooves us, we are, we have to manage our cash in this town as tightly as possible. And, don't get me wrong, I know the, the schools, in all due respect, need certain capabilities, too. But what it does to me is says, if we don't fund the skid steer, we either add something more on capital planning, or we let that money go back to the schools on the, I'll call it the three fifty, whatever the amount is, sixty thousand, and be used in that manner. And that, to me, makes probably more sense. But that's my view.
That's what I'd probably like to see as well, because if there is equipment that can be borrowed, or like Craig says, rented, they're, the, the most urgent thing right now is the three hundred and sixty-one grand that they're, they're stuck down.
Yep.
I, I really don't want to see any layoffs. I think that would be absolutely horrible. So I would much rather defer the skids, it doesn't mean we'll never get them a skid steer, but I think right now, in terms of priorities, I think funding the sped is more important.
I, I would just wait to have them come back to us before our next meeting. I'm sure they'll get back to us if they find out the urgency of this, so let us know fairly quickly, but they'd prefer they could attend our next meeting. And, and no offense to Jim, I do defer to his expertise, but we have expertise at the school that's arguing just as vehemently that they need this device. So they're not before us making their case.
That's true.
But, and no offense, Jim, I mean, both of you made cogent cases why you need it, and, and I'm a giant rental fan.
Yes.
So anyway, so we're all over the place on this one.
Good point.
But I would like to hear what the school comes back with on this, so we can leave it off and put it back on if they come back, if they push for it.
Do you want...
If they, if they say they'd rather have it in the budget, then it kind of solves it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, only from a time perspective, I know the finance committee is meeting this Wednesday. They're also meeting next Monday. They'll be meeting at the same time that you'll be meeting. At that meeting, they'll be making, they're basically their final recommendations for town meeting. So I would recommend, to the extent possible, that we end tonight with at least a set of recommendations, obviously, or a set of format. Obviously, the board has, you know, has until the eleventh to make any changes, but I think if we're able to send something saying, this is where it is as a package, you know, it's always subject to change right up until town meeting, to the extent that you can change motions and so forth. You may want to leave it that, you know, you leave it on here, but if you wanted to defer that to the, to the school committee, to say if the school committee would rather defer the skid steer to a later town meeting in order to have those funds to cover budget difficulties with, with the special education, we could certainly get some word back from the school, I'm sure, later this week. Just trying to provide as much guidance to the finance committee as possible for their meeting next Monday.
And the only reason I would like it left on is because we can vote not to fund it, if that's the decision, but you can't put it back on if on April, you know, if April fifteenth, we finally hear back, you know, or whatever the date may be after the other meeting. If it's on the warrant for the skid steer, we can fund the skid steer, but we don't have to. If it's not on the warrant, and they say, no, we need the skid steer, we have no, we have no way of adding it after we put it on the warrant.
That is, that is correct. So if you, if there's any chance...
Nothing we do tonight is irrevocable, because we could open the warrant next week as easily. That's not an issue.
That's true. I'm trying to send it to...
I think the point was sending it to the FinCom.
If you send it to the FinCom, I would leave it on there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think that's the little...
And I, I'm not, here's my feeling, is that I happen to think that we need to listen to our own DPW director. I understand where you're both coming from. But I also think that we have to understand that we have pieces of equipment that could be made to work, that we have the shortfall, and these are decisions that, regardless of what the schools have to say, and I'm open to whatever they want to say if they come in and talk with us, I have a hard time understanding why we would not put the money toward the sped issue and associated teachers or whatever, versus a piece of equipment that, in fact, DPW has just told us they can make available. So from my perspective, I'd say, we take it off, and we let them come back in and justify whether we put it back on, or whether we use that money accordingly to help the schools from the cost deficit that they're facing at this time. That's my view.
And, and again, it, it comes down to, the CPC has listened to it and put them both on, because they listened to it. Our DPW director has one position, but I think the school's equally passionate about needing it. I haven't attended the meetings, but they, and they did try to work together on it. I, I'm not trying to put more stock in the school or less stock in the school, but I think that, that there is a difference of opinion. I've heard one side of the argument that there's something with hydraulics they could probably use. They choose not to use it, for whatever reason, they probably have a very good reason. But again, it's, I just want to send as complete a package as I can to the finance committee. If we take it off, we'll be putting it on the same night they're voting to discuss it.
Or not. It's the case to be.
If we, if we decide to put it back on.
If we put it back on.
So I would rather vote not to fund it and have it on the warrant that's sent to the finance committee.
The flip side is, if we, if we get feedback, and we still say, we'd prefer to put that sixty thousand dollars to the deficit and sped that they've got, that, that in part, regardless of what everybody says, we have to make those final decisions.
Mm-hmm.
And all I'm suggesting is, I look at it and say, it's easy enough, it's as easy to add it back in as it is to take it off. We can make that decision. But I'm having a hard time, regardless of how much the school may say, I want the skid, if DPW tells me they've got a piece of equipment that could be used, and that schools are facing, that could use that extra sixty thousand dollars. Now, maybe what we should hear is, the schools really have no need for that extra sixty thousand dollars. That's perhaps the other piece of the argument that we're not hearing.
I don't know.
I don't know that myself.
I don't either.
No.
I, I guess that, I mean, I'm, at this point, we should vote one way or the other and move on, because it's just going back and forth right now.
Right.
So, you know, I, I, I move that we put it on the way Mike has it with that skid steer listed, and we come back and discuss it. But, you know, either way, just so we get something on the warrant and get it, get beyond this, and get it over to the finance committee as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's moved and seconded to vote it as presently listed with the skid steer on the warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to say no.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a clarification, I had recommended the deferring of three items to the fall town meeting. Is it the board's decision to have those remain in that article or removed from that article?
Those we, I make a motion to remove those articles.
Second.
I'll make a motion to remove those three articles.
So to approve the town administrator's recommendation? Yes.
Yeah.
As presented.
As presented.
It's been moved and seconded to remove those three items from the article. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, Kathy?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand, I apologize.
On command, Mr. Chair, thank you. I was wondering if Kathy McKenna, Seventy-Eight Island Road, perhaps ten thousand of the marijuana money could go towards the DPW skid steer. That's the sidewalk that needs plowing, that's not big enough, and I say, any little bit helps. That's one, that's just one comment. And the other one regarding this list, Mr. Chair, the, was it a hundred and fifty-nine thousand for the dispatch?
A hundred and twelve.
A hundred and twelve.
A lot of us were excited when Chief Barrett mentioned that the study's being prepared for regionalization of dispatching, and I'm wondering, through the chair, if the town administrator knows when that report is ready? And I ask that because if it's acted favorably, are we spending this kind of money that we might not need? Thank you.
No, apparently, from what I understand, is this particular item is to be used locally and would, in fact, integrate to the other towns, if, in fact, we do that. What we have is literally on the verge of failure. We cannot repair it any longer. So it, those are my understandings. I'm not an expert on it, but that's why they're trying to keep it on there for just that issue. I think it's the radio system that they need to have.
And, Mr. Chair, I just have one more item, and I, I'm going to jump ahead, even though I know the board will, may want to back up after, but just to highlight from the Article twenty-five, would be a new article. And this is after a discussion with council in regards to the, looking to consolidate our facilities maintenance program with the schools. The town meeting did accept this statute several years ago for creating a consolidated finance department in the town. However, council's recommending that we place this article on there that specifically discusses the consolidation of facilities maintenance. This is just to ensure that the town would be legally cleared to move ahead with that. And just to briefly read the article, see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven M, and authorize the consolidation of the facilities maintenance functions of the school committee with those of the town, provided that such consolidation only occur upon a majority vote of the school committee. If so, accepted by the town meeting and school committee, or take any other action in relation there, too. So this is, would simply legally confirm the town's ability to move forward with this based upon the budget put forward and the plan discussed.
Yeah. This is, as noted, it's just a legal procedure, so we can move forward. Are there any other questions or concerns on this?
Not on that item.
Okay, then...
I move that we approve the addition of the new Article twenty-five as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the new addition of Article twenty-five as presented by the town administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You want to go back to...
No, I have another question, not going back, but Mike didn't list. We had talked about the HCA funds being banked somehow into a special use fund, I believe is the word we used, you know, instead of spending them all. Is, is there anything on the warrant that does that? Do we need something on the warrant to do that?
No, I probably want to defer that to the finance director.
Or if we just don't vote them all, does it?
Well, we have done some research on that, and as I, as I had mentioned, we have, I have spoken with our town council, Kate Federoff, in regards to that. She has indicated there are not currently any specific restrictions on the town being able to continue to maintain and track our HCA funds through our free cash, to be able to use them at a later time. But there's certainly some inherent risk that any changes in state law, and there are a number of changes in state law that are currently being considered, could have a negative impact on our ability to do that. That's just an unknown that we can't answer for. The finance director could probably talk about how we currently track those and what would happen if we were to kind of carry those over for a couple of years, how that would be tracked within the free cash. But it wouldn't be, wouldn't be a separate account, I, I believe, and I think Carol could answer a little bit more on the special funds.
My, my goal would be to put it in the safest possible way to alleviate the state concern and not just have it on, my posted notes on my desk at work. I'm sure she's more organized than I, but I have those things floating around. But, you know, special use fund, and if we just don't appropriate all of it, you know, have it flow into that. So anyway, go ahead.
Carol Johnston, Finance Director. So I researched this, and the only avenue available to us is to set up a separate stabilization fund for the marijuana impact money. We would have to put, at minimum, twenty-five percent of all revenues received from the HCA into this fund. We would need a majority vote at town meeting to spend any of the money, and we would have to keep it, the stabilization fund, for at least three years. Couldn't, we couldn't close it out.
We...
Town and Millis.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, we'd be, we could spend down on it over the three years, but we couldn't open it one year.
You could spend down on it over the three years, but you need, what is it, a three-quarter vote at town meeting?
Right, two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds. And you'd have to at least keep a dollar in it for the, for the three years, keep it open.
But I, I think the more important point is that you have to put, at, at minimum, twenty-five percent of all revenues received from the HCA into this stabilization fund every single year. So all revenues that you receive, twenty-five percent of it would have to go into the stabilization fund.
Okay.
Until the revenues cease.
Right.
Theoretically.
So what happens if we just don't appropriate all of our HCA funds at this town meeting? I, I'm, I'm not sure that, where we are with those.
Well, there's not going to be that much left after this.
It'll be the next town meeting when we have the...
Well, the whole idea behind the HCA money is for marijuana mitigation. I would, as an outside person looking at it, saying, if you don't need to spend it in the current year, then you don't need the money to begin with.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, that's the whole idea behind the HCA funding. So, I mean, that's the whole idea behind the HCA funding.
And I'm looking at it as the approach of, we need it desperately for the School Resource Officer and the others, and that is going to go away in five years if we don't.
And you're trying to carry it for next.
And 25% might be a deal breaker, gotta look at the math. But, I guess it segues into the, the social worker. I mean, do we wanna just spend the money on that at this point or not? And that's, that's where I'm getting at, you know?
I would certainly, certainly from the standpoint, and I, I understand what you're saying, and I struggled with that question myself in looking at it, I would recommend, based on where we are in the funding as it is, to, you know, if the board is interested in pursuing this, to look at this for possible startup of such, such an account in the fall if we think it's manageable to do that. But there isn't, there isn't gonna be a lot of funds unless you remove items from the chart as currently presented, there is not going to be a lot of funds remaining that have been certified after this town meeting.
Right, I would just try to avoid adding new items, you know, like the social worker and the HCA funds. Adding new funds to it, new items to it until we figure out if we can open a stabilization fund to carry some of that money over. But, we'll get on to that.
And not assume that we do in fact have funds to carry on, which hopefully we would because of what's coming up in the next couple of years. I think it's a good idea, but I agree, 25%, so, tough issues.
And, Mr. Chairman, just, just as a follow-up, I mean, are we all set with that article?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Just as a follow-up, one last point to make on the review of the warrant. I did ask town council to review the warrant as to form. He has approved it as written as to form. He just made one, one adjustment that's under Article 20. I had listed a two-thirds majority, it's actually a simple majority for Article 20. But otherwise, it is all, as you have received it, it has all been approved as to form.
I have one question, and that is, I have talked with you and the DPW director, and there were some questions about the, using the road, putting the roads in as an article versus a line item. And I know we discussed it last week, I guess it was last week, and chose to put it in as an article, and there were justifications. But I do want to open it, if the DPW director would like, to discuss that and give him a chance to express his views.
So, let me start with, I'm not advocating to do it either way. If we get $160,000, we get $160,000, and very grateful that we can put it towards some road project. I just wanna explain how, how we used those funds last year and why there was funds left over. It was a town meeting vote of $160,000, and I was always under the assumption that you could not even do anything with that $160,000 until after July 1st. You couldn't put a bid out for it, you couldn't do, until after July 1st. So, with the Chapter 90 funding, it's a little different. We get a letter that it's assuring us that, you know, here's your allocation, you can't use it till after the first, July 1st. And we know that we have 270-plus thousand plus the whatever's left over. So this year, we know that we have close to 425,000. I'll be back, you know, in a couple of weeks to put that through. So we're working on getting that bid out now with the Chapter 90 funding excluding the $160,000. So, what we did last year, we put it out, we got all, we did the DPW parking lot, we did, you know, whatever roads, which was, you know, a significant amount of roads last year. After July 1st, we put the bid out for the $160,000. Well, now you're late in the season, and if you, if you put a larger group together, if you bid it all at the same time, you're gonna get a better price. And that showed in almost everything that we did, from the bid that came in, in May of last year, to what went out, and I think it was reopened in August. It was everything, the tonnage was almost up $10 a ton compared to what was earlier. You can also, I heard a question, I was asked a question when we had this discussion, was that, you know, you can encumber whatever's left over. It's not that it just doesn't, it just goes away. You can encumber that, those funds for project, even if it's in the budget. It doesn't mean come July 1st, it goes, goes right back into, and what we would do is I would use those funds first. I see Carol coming up to dispute this.
I was going to question it.
Yeah, I, so you, you, what you would do is you would have to have some, those funds to be used on a specific, you know, what you were gonna use it for. If it was combined with the, the Chapter 90 funding, I would spend that $160,000 first. I would, that would go, when I'm paying the bills, as the large projects put together.
Okay.
And that's, I, again, whatever the board chooses, I, I, I just, I'm not gonna be able to put this out to bid until July 1st, and we're gonna lose, I mean, $160,000, I'm not gonna lie to you, this year's gonna do probably nothing. It's, I, I can already tell you that it's, I've seen prices of $25 to $30 per ton of what we pay. Last year, we paid $74.50 a ton, and we're looking at 120 and up, so. Go ahead, Carol.
Carol?
So I just wanna clarify for everybody. If the money is in the DPW departmental budget, then the money, the services have to be incurred by June 30th, and then the money can be encumbered because the bill hasn't come in yet. But you can't encumber on something that you don't, you haven't, the work hasn't already been performed. So, in the case of an article, an article can continue on, you don't need to encumber it, it's when you close the article out. So it would roll from year to year if the work was still being done.
So that's the difference.
If it's in the budget, if the work has to have been performed by June 30th, then you can encumber the money to pay that bill. Otherwise, either.
I'd have to ask the town director.
Yes.
That if you can, you can, if you have a signed contract for those funds, you can.
If the work has not been performed, if the work has not been performed, then you cannot encumber those funds. If it's in an article.
Yep.
And the work hasn't been performed, you can roll the article over, but not when it's in your operating budget.
I, I do believe we'll need to clarify that with council, just the issue of whether or not, if you have a contract and the work has not been completed by June 30th, just whether or not you can encumber those funds to, to finish that work. I would just wanna get some legal clarification on that.
Yeah, I don't know that we need legal clarification, we have a clear bright line solution right there, which is the warrant, that nobody's disputing, and as a CFO, I always agree with finance directors, just to start with. But anyway.
I didn't disagree with her, I just thought I wanted to check off.
But I, but no, but I would, I would say that, I, I mean, we've got it in the warrant for $160,000. There's no dispute, we're trying to fund $160,000 in roads. If it's in the budget and we don't spend it at the end of the year, if we have a snow and ice deficit or something else, it's not necessarily earmarked for roads. Once it's in the budget, it can be used on any other line in there, not that we would want to, but I've seen that in other departments in the past, where money was earmarked for some item in their budget, but it was still moved to a new, another expense because something else became more pressing. Once it's in a warrant, it's voted by the town, it can't be used for anything other than that by anybody but the town.
So, right now though, I'm being swayed a little bit by Jim, Jim's statement about the, about getting a quote at all at one time with all of the money.
But he still can't do it until after town meeting. Town meeting has to approve it.
All right, go ahead.
So I think what she's saying is that if we put it all, the bid out altogether.
Right.
Of the $500,000, $600,000 that we have, that $160,000, there'll be nothing left, correct? It'll be paid off the very first bill that comes in, for the first load of tonnage that comes. And again, I, I just, I, I don't understand the fact, you're losing the bid option of bidding something much larger than putting two bids out.
I, I don't understand the difference between it being in.
But just, because I can't put it out to bid until July 1st.
Even if it's an article or a warrant, I don't think you can.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
If I may, we, once funding has been approved, we can go out to bid, you cannot, you cannot award a bid, and a contract cannot begin until July 1st. But, but you can start a process.
But that, that means not until after town meeting may.
Well, yeah, after town meeting, you could, you could, 'cause you have the committed funds, they just can't begin the work until July 1st.
Right.
Under either scenario, they can.
Right, you cannot get bids until after the money's approved.
Right.
Period, okay?
The question I would then say, do you, what's your view at this point, Jim?
I honestly think, I don't know why, it should be all together, that even if we, if we can't bid it, or, I was told at that meeting that we could put this bid out with the 160 in there, that, that I was wrong with holding the bid last year till after July 1st, is that?
After town meeting.
I wasn't in the meeting.
No, no, you weren't, no, you weren't, no, she wasn't.
And that's what we're all saying.
So what they're saying is after town meeting, Jim?
Right. After town meeting.
You can go for the bidding.
Has to be after town.
Yeah, you, yeah, you really can't until after town meeting, and I know this.
And start the work after July 1st.
And the work starts after.
No matter how it's funded.
Correct.
Regardless of the funding.
Okay, so I, I, good, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say, and, and again, I think.
Then we'll do it that way.
I think there are pros and cons to each approach, I don't think it's a clear-cut answer here. I will say that, you know, ultimately, the select board controls this budget, you know, myself and the DPW director run it day to day, but you ultimately control it. If it was sent in there for $160,000 for construction, it would, we'd make a commitment that it would stay there, and if we were, had for any reason looking to change that, we'd come back to the board for that. Having said that, I, I understand that in the past, there have been instances where that has occurred. So I, I get both sides of that argument, not here, but in other departments and other areas.
Mr. McKay, let me ask you this. Based on the discussion, do you mind if we continue?
I, I don't, but I, I think we're both saying the same thing. If the 100, I, I look at, I know what you're saying, it's better to, in the public, to see that at a, at a town meeting, we're getting up there to say, we put another $160,000 in, on a, on a warrant article. It's clean cut either way. If it's in the budget, it's gonna be spent on roads. It's gonna be, it's gonna be the first thing spent, but it's your choice, it, it's.
Well, I, the reason I'm asking you is I know you have some concerns.
Yep.
And I wanna make sure we're answering your concerns.
I think the town administrator, my concerns are, as long as I can put that, everything out using one bid, then however it's.
You can put it out on May 3rd, and you can't, and you can't, but you can't sign a contract that, that is effective until July 1st.
Then I can't, then that's gonna.
No, you can sign a contract, but the contract can't be effective.
You cannot actually start to work.
They can't start paving till July 1st.
Okay, so, and just for you know, I mean, it's, it's a month late, usually, I've been waiting to put this out, I've, I've been getting things ready, but I've been waiting for this, you know, discussion. So I have not even, we started to work on the bid, so putting it out after like May 3rd or whatever year, it's gonna be a month, usually we put it out in February. The bid's out in February.
You can put it out, you can't sign the contract until after town.
No, I get that, so, so we can put the bid out, you're saying we can put the bid out in February.
Well, you, well, you don't have, you don't have the money in hand, and you're, you're assuming you'll get the, you'll get the appropriation. You cannot award a bid.
Right.
Certainly, you cannot award a bid unless you have the money approved by town meeting. Until the town meeting has acted and the town meeting has closed, as adjourned, you keep, that money is not guaranteed until that point.
So I, I think what the town administrator and the finance director is telling me tonight, that come next year, come February 1st, when I usually put the bid out, put it out to bid, including that $160,000, but don't sign the contract until after town meeting.
After town meeting.
Right, and that's under any scenario. If it's in your budget.
That's never been, that's never been in a scenario I would be talking.
Okay, and, and, and the construction can't start till July 1st.
I got it.
Okay?
Yeah, oh, no, I'm okay, like I said, I'm not advocating either way.
No, no, I just, I wanna make sure you're comfortable with the answer, that's all.
Yeah, I just didn't, I saw last year, we paid, and that's why we had $25,000 left. Okay, sounds good.
Just tell them we're gonna pay the same amount this year, right? Okay, are there any other issues to be brought up with the warrant at this time?
Not for me, Mr. Chairman, so.
Do either of you have any issues to be discussed with the warrant?
With the warrant?
I have one other, of course I do. I had the opportunity to attend the Finance Committee where I did hear about the petitioned article. I'm not gonna take a position on it, but I'd like to, I, I would like to hear, I heard the pros that was presented quite eloquently about why we should do it, I would like to have a discussion around those at some point, can we do that next week, potentially? Because otherwise, we're going in with just one presentation that the Finance Committee gave. Quite well done, but I'd like to find out if there are cons, if somebody can help educate us on that and help educate the public on it. I mean, I think it's, it's both sides to this needing to be heard, and, and towards that end, I'd invite the petitioner to present, and I'd also like to discuss it, because I think we have to, if not recommend on it, at least fully understand what we're talking about here, but that's just my request.
So, what do you believe?
Um, so, so what are you proposing that we, so if we've, if.
Well, we have.
If the pros have been presented.
Yeah.
Where are you looking for us to take the cons from?
I think we should discuss the, I, I would like to discuss this article amongst ourselves.
Okay.
Because.
That's basically what it is.
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't, and I, we've received the email that had the presentation in it. We could discuss it, I just think it needs to be aired. I think we need to hear about it and discuss it, and, and I wouldn't even mind a presentation on it, but I've heard it once, so if anybody else feels the need. But I think it's important that we do discuss it. Maybe not vote on it, maybe not recommend, or not recommend dismissal, but I think it's important that we're clear on what this absolutely means to the town if we do this.
Right.
In public way.
Then I would, based on your recommendation, why don't you make, why don't we just say, we want to make this an agenda item for next week?
That would solve my.
And, is that, is that okay?
That's perfect.
And during the week, we need to come up with a way to get pros and cons. I don't know what there is, I'm just saying.
I've been calling some other towns that have these, just to find out what their view of it is.
Because I've heard some myself, but I hate to be second and third-hand dealing with some of this, but we need to get both sides out there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you want this just under, discuss annual town meeting warrant articles, or do you want it this, a separate event with the time?
I'd like it as a separate, I'd like it as a separate item. I happen to think that it's an issue that needs to be discussed. I do not, and this is my opinion, I do not think it's one that we should be voting on. That's based on recommendations that the FINCOM Finance Committee will be coming up, but I don't believe that this board necessarily should be taking a position one way or the other.
On a citizen's petition.
On a citizen's petition, exactly. That's my view, again.
Yeah, and, and we have it historically on this board that I recall, but, but we've also been educated on it, and I think that's important.
Oh, sure, education.
And I think that discussing it amongst ourselves, we understand it fully, is important.
Okay, we will have that discussion, and we will hopefully have people come in and discuss it with us at that time.
So you're gonna be taking, other than your three discussing, you'll be?
That, that's something that this board will have to decide, Kathy. I, and we, Craig has already said he wants to hear both sides of the issue, so more than likely, the petitioner will be given an opportunity. But I'm not gonna presume what the board will vote to do at that time. I leave that to the board at the time, I think that's the most appropriate way to leave it. And my guess is, there will be discussion.
Just with all due respect, there were some comments that were made at the FINCOM presentation that some individuals that supported this have answered. So I think some of the cons regarding why didn't it go to the warrant or charter commission, whatever group that was, and we've, several of us have spoken with other towns also that we have information to share, so we respectfully request time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay.
Close the warrant?
Yeah, we're gonna close it in just a second. Oh, excuse me.
May I address, I think it's Article 20?
Please, come up and.
I think the new number is Article 20, it's regarding the change in the number of select board members?
No.
Yes.
That is Article 20.
That is Article 20.
Now, this is referring to a change in our Home Rule Charter. Now, the purpose of a Home Rule Charter is so the town can rule itself without having to ask the legislature for assistance, and it has a very clear revision process spelled out in Article 5. It's a very, this rule, Home Rule Charter is very short. The charter change in Article 5, the first paragraph amendments to this charter relating in any way to the composition of the select board may be proposed only by a charter commission elected in accordance with the general laws. Now, I believe the word "only" is in there on purpose, so that the select board cannot propose a change to itself, by itself, and it's not, you're, you're asking for a special act, and, and to me, asking for a special act is obviously bypassing the necessity for an elected charter commission and bypassing the necessity of letting the entire town vote on this issue at a, on a ballot. And if you think this is such a great idea, it should be a great idea next year also. Why do we have to jam it through this year? What's the rush? So, my main, that's my argument against going with a special act, but mainly I'm saying, it says "only" a charter, an elected charter commission, so I'm assuming the town council told you. So I'm assuming the Town Council told you, "Oh, you can get by that with a special act because you can do anything with a special act." But that, you know, is bypassing our ruling ourselves, which is the whole purpose of the Home Rule Charter.
We are not moving forward in a cavalier fashion. We have reviewed this extensively with legal counsel of the town. We are not moving forward in any cavalier fashion to, as you said, ram it down anyone's throat. This has been discussed now for a couple of years. There have been discussions about, should we proceed or not? That's when the Charter Review Committee was constituted. What's coming out of that were recommendations from that Charter Review Committee. Town Council has apprised us of the fact that that's a reasonable and rational way to proceed, that using the special act is in fact well within the scope of how these things are done in all towns that have the privilege of home rule. And we are not doing anything outside any rules or doing any kind of subterfuge or trying to ram anything through. And I don't like the innuendo that we are trying to ram anything through. Nothing in this case has been anything wide open and available and visible to the rest of the town. All has been done with total open view to town, with discussion with council, and how we're gonna proceed. The answer is, we're moving forward with this article as stated at the recommendation of Town Council. Thank you.
I know you are.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? I'll take a vote on closing the warrant.
I move that we close the warrant.
Second.
So moved and seconded to close the warrant. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
The warrant is now closed.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. If I can ever find it. Okay, discuss warrant, close warrant. Amendment to ownership interest alcohol license. Okay, this is the Ryan Family Amusements.
Yes, there it goes. I need to get to my page here. So, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is just a procedural thing by the Board, acting as the local licensing authority, the LLA, for the Alcohol Commission. Ryan Family Amusements holds an all-alcohol license. They are looking to transfer to a new stockholder here, I believe. And, did I include all of it? Basically, they're just changing the ownership makeup. And so the Board will be just approving that. They have provided all of the information that the ABCC requires. We have checked through that. This will still go to the ABCC once the Board approves this moving forward. And they will have the final decision on that. So basically, you're just approving the application to the ABCC.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions?
No.
No.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the amendment to ownership interest alcohol license for Ryan Family Amusements.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the ownership license change to Ryan Amusements, Family Amusements Incorporated. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Approval of sign permit application, Millis Medway Football Cheer, football and cheer.
Again, this one is pretty straightforward. The Millis Medway Youth Football and Cheer Group is looking to put up some yard signs just to advertise, I believe, registration. They're asking to put it up now through the 1st of August. It has been unusual for the Board to, I should say. The Board typically approves sign, yard signs such as this on town property for only a period of maybe four to six weeks tops. Usually does not just go through like indefinitely till the end of August. So I guess you would have to make a decision whether you just wanna approve it for a period of four or six weeks, and they could decide whether they want it up to 8/1 or they wanna start it now and end it in six weeks. Or you can throw all of that out and make any other decision.
Well, my initial inclination is, I don't have a problem with them having it, but I think it's something that we should review every four to six weeks and then decide if we go forward. What do you think? I mean.
I mean.
It's a long period.
It is a long, I mean, I assume they're getting registrations for the fall, which is why they would go through August.
I mean, I can certainly reach out to Ms. Schultz and just ask her if she would prefer that this was just six weeks leading up to the August 1st, or?
Well, my only res, like, I mean, it's football and cheer, so I'm really not worried about it. Yeah. But, but, let's see, Millis Fire, yeah, I mean, it's only those, what, four locations? Oh, three locations?
Three locations, it's not a big, too big of a deal, but.
Yeah, I mean.
It's up to you. I think I'd be, I don't think I care.
I'd make a motion that we approve it as is also.
Call it.
Because, I mean, if we're reviewing it every four to six weeks, what are we gonna say, no?
I know.
Right, okay.
And I think the only reason, honestly, the Boards in the past have kind of looked at that as, because we had so many that they didn't want it just to be like, constantly having, you know, 15 signs in one spot, but we don't have any other ones at this point.
I just don't wanna be setting a precedent where now a bunch of them come in and say, "Well, you did it for this one, you're gonna do it for this."
If I get a bunch of them coming in, I'll.
But if we get them, we can always rescind this approval.
This is revocable anytime.
We can rescind this approval at any time if we have to.
Yeah, it's three places, yeah, I'm good. So he made a motion, I second.
Okay. Moved and seconded to allow this.
So they can put them up as early as tomorrow.
To move forward, and they can set it up as early as tomorrow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. I gotta see if there's anything else.
Merit increase. Oh.
And then we have discussed a merit increase for the Town Administrator. Are we giving him a merit increase? Golly, you know? Okay. Let me see, I thought I had a piece of paper, a crib sheet, so you'll have to bear with me. Nope, that's different. I did leave that at home. I will tell you right now that we have a number of, we've gone through a number of reviews individually with the Town Administrator. We've also felt that what he did was outstanding for the last, not just this last year, but I'm gonna qualify and say the last couple of years with COVID and all the other problems that we've had. His merit increase, I believe, was 2%, was it 2.5%?
Actually, last year it was 1%.
Okay.
So, which, the merit.
You could go as much as 2, as I recall.
1.5?
It was 1.5.
Oh, I thought we could go up to 2.
Can I ask a question, just for mechanics? First time through, there's a base contractual raise?
Right.
And then there's merit on top, correct?
There it go on top of that.
Okay. What is the base contractual raise?
1.5.
1.5. What we were doing was making sure that he understood, or any Town Administrator understood, that with merit increase, they could in fact go above and beyond if in fact we felt their service had been performed above and beyond what we consider reasonable.
Right, and mechanically, the merit increase is up 2, is there?
1.5?
Yeah, 1.5.
So, could you see it would be up to 3?
Theoretically, 3. That's where I was coming up with the number. But I happen to believe that he has done a substantial amount of work that was unexpected throughout the last couple of years, and particularly this last year, with the vagaries that we've encountered with COVID, but also with some of the planning for the town, taking on the responsibility of trying to manage the facilities management aspect of things, bringing in our new IT Director and getting IT set up as a function within the town, and coordinating some of the building projects with the DPW that have been taking place. So overall, I've been quite pleased. So my view is, he is certainly meriting a reasonable merit increase. But I'd like to hear from the other two members of the Board, what you think and what your views are on this. We ultimately have to decide on an amount if we decide to give a merit increase.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, having just done this, I've been seeing overall between 2.5% and 3.5% at our nonprofit. I mean, we've been running it tight also, the town's in a tight position. But honestly, between 2.5% and 3.5% is where our, all of our merit raises fell. I think that 3% raise is where I'm comfortable. I think that going to the maximum on the merit, as you described, plus a 1.5% base gets us into a range I'm very comfortable with.
Same. I have to say, I've been very pleased with Mike's performance, and it's really a Herculean effort of, and it's amazing that he can do what he does because it is so ridiculously busy in there and in short-staffed that he works some magic. So I certainly believe the effort in merit is there, and I would agree with the 1.5%.
Yeah. I think you could tell from my comments earlier where I'm lying on this. And I also agree, although I kinda wish that you'd not cut off at 14 and 15-hour days. I don't understand why you don't continue with those on a regular basis.
You'd have to ask my wife.
Yeah. I think you've been of great service to the town. We see it in the way the employees work in Town Hall and overall. And I think what you have been doing has been outstanding. So I too would concur with the 1.5% on the merit increase. So with respect to that, I'll take a motion from the Board.
I move that we afford the Town Administrator a 1.5% merit increase.
Second.
So moved and seconded to afford the Town Administrator a 1.5% merit increase. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I appreciate the kind words and the confidence. It's greatly appreciated. And again, I'd like to thank the Board and all the employees that work for the town because that's, that, again, as I said earlier, they're the ones who make it all happen. I'm glad and happy to be a part of the operation and be able to guide that, so.
I think you've heard, we all believe you've earned it, and that's the important thing.
We can give ourselves one of them or two.
Yeah, right.
How much of an increase do you want, Craig?
I'll take the full, one and a half.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Take that under advisement, yeah, right. Okay. I think at this stage, we need to observe. To Executive Session, is there anything?
You have liaison meeting updates, if there's anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's correct.
Yes.
We have liaison meetings, go ahead.
Got one.
Go for it.
So I went to the Cemetery Committee meeting, which frankly, people are missing out here because this is fascinating stuff, and I'm not even being facetious. So we had a meeting, and there's a new section, I believe it's G, that they're going to be looking at creating layouts for. And there's some incredible talent that, there's hand-drawn engineering diagrams, multiple copies of it, different, showing different layouts for burial, if you will, for fit of people. It was, it was, it was fascinating.
Burial plots for all shapes and sizes.
Seriously. And, and these people put forth so much work into this. It's just, the volunteers we have are absolutely amazing, and we are so ridiculously fortunate that these people spend their time doing this. So it was a, it was a great meeting, they've got some great plans, and yeah. I mean, I'd say head up the Cemetery Committee because it's some good meetings. And then I also went to Capitol Planning, but we pretty much heard everything that they came with, so.
Craig?
Yeah, I unfortunately missed the PBC meeting. It's fundraising season for the Y, and I'll do that tomorrow night again. And, but I did go to the Economic Development, working on new ideas. Nothing major reported at this point. They just presented to us the week before here and got everything they've been working on for six months presented to us. Now it's the start of new ideas, nothing major report coming out of that committee at this moment.
Excellent. I don't know, did I report last time that I attended the Charles River?
Yes.
Pollution Control District?
I think you did, that was.
I think I did. Other than that, I haven't had to attend any committee meetings, although I've attended a lot of meetings with Mike and Karen, I will tell you that.
May I just say one more thing?
Please do.
This is back on the Cemetery Committee. It's Wayne Simpson. Yes. Who is the engineer, and again, hand-drawn plans, multiple layouts. I don't think anybody understands what I'm talking about here, but this was ridiculously impressive. So this guy is a treasure, and I took a picture of one of them if anybody wants to see it after because it was amazing. I'm sorry, I just have to sing this guy's praises, it was crazy.
That's great.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, just to add, I would completely concur. I have seen his work, Aaron. Wayne is a treasure, he really is. He does, has done unbelievable things for the cemetery. Now, I'll also note that our own Stephen Main, who's one of our DPW employees, has a lot of knowledge about the cemetery and the history of the cemetery, and often does something through recreation where you can attend, and he will do a whole walk through the cemetery and give you the whole history. And he is, he knows a lot. It is worth attending that as well, so if you're into that.
Yeah, I'd like to.
It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful cemetery. It really is. I, it's, you know, but anyway, but Mr. Simpson is fantastic, I agree. Sorry to digress a little bit, but. There we go.
No, that's fine. I will say that we are seeing some usage at the old fire department.
Niagara Hall.
Niagara Hall.
Yes, yes.
They've had a number of concerts of different types, jazz and so forth. And I encourage the community to attend those. They're really well-done, the Cultural Council hosts them. And I was quite impressed with the performers. I'm trying to remember, Rob, what's his last name?
Zamarkey.
Yeah, Zamarkey, does an outstanding job.
He does.
And he and his wife perform also, so they're a lot of fun. So if you have a chance, please attend some of these sessions. They're a great deal of fun.
I think we have them all posted on the website as well. You should be, or someone could certainly send an email. But the listing is all posted for all of the upcoming, goes right through the fall, the upcoming concerts.
And the hall looks great.
Yeah, it does.
And if you haven't been in, since they refurbished it, you gotta go.
I wanna go.
It's really, really impressive. They've done a great job on it. Okay, enough of that.
Okay, yes. Well, these committees don't often get the thanks and the praise that they should, you know? It's a lot of work these people put in.
We don't have any water sewer or anything this week, I guess. So I guess we're going to be adjourning to Executive Session. Once we go into Executive Session, we'll be discussing the Conex Strategy Sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel of the SEIU Local 888. Once we emerge from Executive Session, we will then close our meeting. So I'm now going to ask the Board, move to move to Executive Session.
As moved, as so.
As described.
As described, yeah.
And I'll poll the Board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Okay, we're in Executive Session. Thank you all very much, and we'll hope to see you the next meeting. Good night.